Jeff Squire from the Berkshire Design Group here on behalf of Todd Soler and Sovereign Builders. And then with us also virtually, because he couldn't be here tonight, is Charles Roberts from Tuned Metal Architects, who's also been working on the project and will share some comments about the architectural component of the project. This-
So Jeff, sorry, we're not going to allow that, alright?
Your mic is George Ray.
So I contacted him, he knows that he can't present.
Ah, okay.
They'll have to type his comments in the chat.
Okay, so I'm not prepared to talk too much about the architecture and we'll just have to figure this out.
But in fairness, a bunch of the stormwater stuff, it sounds like it hasn't been-
We'll talk about this, okay. So this project is on 8U Avenue, just to make everybody familiar. It really comprises two parcels, 25C12 and 25C17. There's some other land that's associated with, you know, the project, but some of it is being sold off through an A and R and has been developed through different means. So what we're looking at generally is what you see highlighted here, which is about five and a quarter acres with a private drive that extends off of North Street. And then it does extend up to a small finger in the north end of the parcel on Northern Ave, the western end of Northern Ave. And then the western edge of the property bucks the rail trail, bike path, and then private property on the sort of southwest and southern edges. As you all may know, this is a project or property that, at least from Berkshire's standpoint, we've looked at for a number of developers. We've done a number of schemes on this. This property is unique in that it's nestled in in the URB zoning district close to downtown with access to a lot of the, you know, major thoroughfares, vehicle and pedestrian and bike and otherwise. There's a substantial amount of wetlands on the property. The rear western portion of the property is primarily bordering vegetated wetland. There's also, you can see sort of highlighted in this heavy blue line, 200-foot riverfront area associated with stream that comes through from the west side and is culverted underneath the bike path and then continues to spill out into this larger wetland. So really, the area that we're, you know, looking at is this eastern portion of the site. It's maybe a third of the overall land area, maybe a little bit more. It currently contains a single-family home, about 1,500 square feet. There's a small shed in the backyard and it's primarily just mown lawn that slopes down to a number of mature tree plantings, some stone wall remnants along the edge of the wetland. We are seeking a special permit approval for 12 new single-family efficiency units under section 350-10 and 350-11. It also includes this private drive that is View Ave. This is for 12 new efficiency units, which I'll describe in a little bit more detail in a moment. But this is just some images of the existing site. So this is looking down View Ave, this is the single-family home that exists on the site now. This is the back of the building, to the right, upper right here in the shed, you can see in the background. And then looking around the site through sort of the forest of woodlands and wetlands in the back, the mown lawn, you can see up to the, there's a number of large, mature Norway spruces on the site. And that's what you can see, that's what all these evergreens that you can see in the background are. Some views of the wetland area, and then there's an existing trail system on the northern edge of the property, which we'll talk about later. As I noted, the proposal is for 12 new efficiency units on eastern portion of the site. It includes an improvement to what is View Ave now, and then it branches off into two dead-end roads essentially with a small parking area, which accommodates 15 cars. There's provision for emergency vehicle turnaround in this space here. But all these units back up against the wetland area, respecting the 35-foot no disturb limit in this zoning district. Obviously, the majority of this site is either within 100-foot buffer zone or riverfront. And, you know, understandably, we can't avoid all impacts to buffer zone, but we are respecting certainly the 35 no disturb and any disturbance within the riverfront area. So these are 12 new units. There's nine units, these small units are 768 square feet. There's nine of those, and then there's three of these larger units, which include a roughly 250-square-foot carport, which is really the additional square footage. Those are just over 1,300 square feet. These are all electric. They will be, they've got and been designed with the appropriate HERS rating based on, you know, zoning requirements for these, this style of unit, type of unit. As I noted, we've got 15 parking spaces, there are three additional spaces within these carports conceivably. So there's parking for 18 total conceivably with compact cars. You could fit another space in these driveways for the larger units, but we've said that there's parking for 18 legitimately. There are two covered bike storage sheds. There's one at this intersection here, and then further back on the site in this location. These are covered bike sheds that each can accommodate easily three, four bike racks. So eight bikes total comfortably in each of these structures. Taking you through some of the other details of the site, stormwater and drainage, understandably is a pretty big concern out here given the high groundwater cable and the proximity of wetlands. We've maintained essentially the same surface area that is draining to the east off of View Ave. The remainder of the site from roughly this high point here. We branch off into two different drainage areas, one for this lower southern parking lot, which is collected through a series of treatment chambers and infiltration galleys. And then to the north, similarly, we are draining to a catch base in the stormwater collection system here, which is a much larger system due to a little bit higher elevation than the groundwater. So we have the ability to provide some additional underground storage in this location. The roof water is all being picked up via a series of subsurface pipes that all tie to these same systems. We are also including a series of subdrains just in recognition of the need to ensure that, you know, ground flows and stormwater continues to do closely what it's doing now through the site, presuming it's moving east to west. So there's a series of subdrains around the pavement structure, both on the outside eastern edge and then along the inside sidewalk edge to help direct any ground flows that might be moving through and get them through the site. So, you know, we don't create an impingement to that process. There's a small outdoor community space as required by zoning. This is really, you know, glorified fire pit area. It's intended to be, you know, very low impact. It's a small fire ring with some seating available around it, Adirondack chairs, that type of thing, with a gravel, compacted gravel pad. We're not anticipating that this is going to be this large pavilion, you know, concert structure. This is really just a place for the residents to gather and have a, you know, small, you know, outdoor activity or something during the nicer weather. Utility-wise, other utilities, water, we are, we've been especially with DPW. There's an existing four-inch line that extends up View Avenue now. That was connected to a new eight-inch service that was stubbed out by the city several years ago. So we are proposing to abandon essentially that four-inch line, replace it with a new eight-inch line to service the site. All the existing services will be connected to that new eight-inch line per DPW request, and then that will continue into the site to service the new units. There's various hydrants as needed and required for flushing and fire suppression needs. Similarly, sanitary, there is an existing line in View Ave that goes to a certain point. We've agreed to, you know, video that line, ensure it is in good condition, good working order. Essentially, these new units will connect via a gravity system to a single ejector pump, which will then connect, which will then, you know, via force main, connect to a new structure that goes to that gravity service, provided that's in decent condition. If it's not, you know, we've obviously got the ability to replace that or work with the DPW to do what's needed to accommodate that. But that's sanitary. Lighting, yeah, I think just in recognition of the location and the, you know, really the desire to not provide any more lighting that is really necessary to safely get people through the site and, you know, get to their parking areas and to their front doors safely. There's four, there's four single site poles. This is just an image that's similar to what we're proposing, but these are all compliant with city regulations, both in terms of dark sky lighting, bug ratings, full cutoff. We did go through at least a revision or two to clarify some of the extents of that photometrics. But overall, it is these, you know, four single lights, there's one small bollard just at the junction of the community, you know, fire pit area. And then we also included in this plan the photometrics for ceiling mounted, there'll be flush ceiling mounted lights at each of the entries and under the bike shelters just for, you know, for general safety there. But those photometrics are also included here. But there's no other exterior lighting that was, that's proposed on the buildings or on the site. So really trying to minimize the amount of light, you know, in that part of the neighborhood and just recognition that it is a dense neighborhood. Planting plan, obviously, as I mentioned before, there are a number of mature Norway spruces on the site. You know, we, there are a number that are still depicted here that are going to be preserved, but there also are a number that will need to come out as a result of the project. You know, we recognize that that's certainly not the ideal situation, but, you know, I would offer that these are all, every single one of these is a Norway spruce. All of them are 90, you know, 80 to 90 feet tall and sort of reaching the end of their lifespan. And, you know, particularly with those, that tree species, as you start to remove vegetation or is vegetation around these large, you know, groves die off, it just creates a much larger hazard for the trees that are remaining because they are so big and that the wind throw during, you know, you know, heavy wind events has a tendency to wreak a lot of havoc. So, you know, those, within the limited work, we are proposing to remove. Those have been accounted for in, we did include a tree removal plan that notes the, that notes the tree replacement required, what we're able to provide, and then obviously the mitigation that's necessary to compensate for the difference. But, you know, what is being planted are, you know, a number of, you know, tree species, including white oaks. We've got plane trees, I think there's ironwood, we've got obviously some shad bush and some langur here, dogwoods. So there's a number of other species that we're trying to add to the mix of species out there to diversify that woodland area. And obviously, a number of shrub species as well, just to sort of finish out that landscape, offer buffers, you know, where they're needed, up against property lines and against property boundaries. There are, there were four mature spruces here that were recently added to be removed just again because of negotiations with budding landowners and concerns about the hazard of those. So in place, you know, we have added additional plantings, we do have some fencing, some screen fencing in locations where vehicle headlights may present a concern. So those are certainly in areas, particularly along this edge, where headlights are, you know, might be a concern. This northerly parking lot is less so, this is quite a bit a distance from neighboring residences. And then similarly here, there are residents to the east, but we have, you know, provided a number of plantings in there just to provide some additional screening and buffer. Again, just the tree removal exhibit, what you see in red is what's being proposed for removal. These are all trees that would fall under the significant tree ordinance. And I think all of these are Norway spruces, but they've been accounted for. And as I mentioned, the required mitigation is being offered up as part of this permit. The project, just highlighting a couple of other things.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I know that tree removal is something that is of concern to some of the others. So can you just share with everybody the calculation of exactly what's being removed and how much is being replanted versus what's being paid to the tree inventory?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the caliper inches that are being removed, the total, the total caliper inches is 777 inches. That requires 389 inches of tree replacement, so it's essentially half of the trees that are being removed. We are able to accommodate 115 inches of tree caliper with the new planting plan in the areas that we're planting. And so there's 274 inches of additional mitigation that's required, that would be in payment in lieu of planting. So that's certainly offered up as part of the, as part of the project.
Thank you.
Yep. As you know, just a couple of other things to mention. That we are, we are providing a new accessible sidewalk connection along the northern edge of View Avenue to connect to North Street. This will be a paved sidewalk to provide, you know, fully accessible access out to the public way. We are also, we are also improving or enhancing, there's an existing trail that it's sort of winds through. So you can see evidence of it here that winds sort of across the backyards of all these properties, through these, through the existing wetlands and sort of the drier areas. And exits in a couple of locations, there's a very prominent connection to the bike path through what was formerly a sort of a homeless encampment in this area. But there's a real obvious connection to the bike path there. There's also a connection that winds up and around, connects to the end of, the western end of Northern Ave before it crosses this drainage ditch and then the bike path again. So as part of this, we are proposing to relocate and enhance that trail, to, you know, relocate it to this property where possible, and then improve it to the extent that it's, it will be established gravel path. There are some elevated portions of boardwalk that we are providing to get through the BBW portions in consultation with a conservation commission. So all of that is, you know, we're really trying to make that connection and that existing trail system, you know, part of this project and integrate it into the, some of the pedestrian connections that exist now and into the future. This does, just comment that this does, this project does fit some of the goals of the Sustainable Northampton Comprehensive Plan, particularly goal H1, which speaks to providing affordable, high-density housing for mixed incomes with small, energy-efficient homes. And this certainly achieves all of those, all of those goals. And then I think finally, I would just speak to traffic before presenting some of the architectural drawings. As required, we did provide a traffic mitigation summary. And essentially, the, you know, the summary is that there is one existing single-family home that exists there now that would be accounted for. There are 12 new ones that will replace that, so there are 11 additional single-family units, which would generate an additional 11 vehicle trips during the peak hour. And so that's the mitigation payment that's offered up as part of the mitigation required for the traffic increase. It's, you know, this isn't high-density housing necessarily, these aren't apartments. These are, you know, small, single-family, single-family units. And I will try to run through some of these architectural slides and images as best I can. And if Charles wants to chime in at any point, please interrupt me and let him go. But as I mentioned, we approached this project, you know, in a way that really tried to focus and enhance the resource areas on the site and the open space, being cognizant of, you know, the adjacent residential homes and properties and, you know, not overdevelop this property as some of the previous projects that the board has maybe seen in the past. So these are all, again, small efficiency units, largest is about 1,300 square feet. That's these three larger ones here, which, you know, are larger really due to their carport that is below the first floor or the upper floor. And then there's some, you know, additional, you know, living space on the upper level.
Jeff, I'm sorry to ask you an architectural question, but what are those wood slats on the larger units on the roof? In a sense?
That, I think these are, these are the spaces above the carports, which are more intended to be pre-season rooms. So I would imagine that's probably some slatted opening in the ceiling to provide some light, some additional ventilation in that space. They're not meant to be, you know, I don't think it's a necessarily fully conditioned space. Would be my guess.
Okay.
But that's-
Charles chime, yeah?
He did. He said there's sunscreens. So I mean, just to clarify, there's three unit types, 800 square feet, three 1,200 square foot with carports, two bedrooms, two and a half bedroom at the car, for the carport units. And they're all electric, flat roofs, universal heat exposure. And just to the private backyard spaces.
Question, I mean, this is a, when you're cutting down all the trees that you're going to be cutting down, are your, how do these have solar and you see so close to these homes?
How, I'm sorry. So this is, I mean, this is the way, this is looking west. So the southern exposure really is, you know, off of this side of the site. Yeah, I mean, there are a number of mature trees in that, in that existing wetland area that, you know, we're certainly not proposing to cut down. You know, some of those may limit optimal solar exposure, but I think the intention is certainly to, you know, have solar capacity for any of these units. You can see the small bike shelters in this corner, and then again, further back on the site. Again, just other views of the site from different directions, this is looking to the east. Again, this is, so there's two different versions of these smaller 800-square-foot units, depending on their orientation. You can see in the site plan that some are oriented sort of the long way and some are oriented, you know, horizontally with a long edge of the building to the sidewalk, to the open space. Primarily, the difference is in the way the interior space is oriented, so that in these, the narrower oriented units, there's, you know, large glass windows, views out the back of the building, you know, offering views of that, of that wetland, of that open space. This is the second floor, again, two bedrooms, bath in the upper floor, large living space, open living space in the lower floor. And then the other unit, which again, same size, same general footprint, offers a long, long open view along the longer horizontal ledge. So it offers some flexibility with regards to how we orient the different units on the site. But these are all two-bedroom, one-bath, and yet less than 800 square feet. These are the larger units, you can see on this ground floor, there's, this is the single carport area, upper level, which you can see, let's see, over here where the carport is. The upper level is got this sort of covered deck area on that upper level with direct access from that second story, offering, you know, that additional amenity, there's a little bit of additional storage space on that ground floor as well. So that's one of the benefits of those larger units, but there's three of them in general. And these are just some images of bike shed. These show, you know, much more than four bike racks. There's certainly capacity for these at a minimum. Like I said, very comfortably, we can fit, you know, 16, 18 bikes in these. But these are, you know, modest, you know, sheltered, covered areas for bike storage and bike pumps, that types of thing. And then these are just a series of images walking through the site. And then there's a little video that Kim will put together that I think is a good, a good introduction to the site as well. So just looking, these are sort of in the southwestern corner. Looking back, the resource areas, the wetlands are behind all of these units. The south part of the property is off to the right here. Coming around, you can see one of the bike shelters here as you enter. These are one of the units as you come into the site, View Ave is off to the right. Road branch is off to the north, and then to the south here, to the bottom of the page. Just sort of the back of the units, again, we don't anticipate there's going to be much yuck in the wetlands, but the idea that these all face up against, you know, that bordering vegetated wetland and, you know, really enhance that open space.
Quick question, so and what do we see there, kind of a wooden patio?
This area here?
Those have as patios?
So these, this is what was shown in the, in this, these renderings. Their, the site plans don't include that space, so we're not proposing. There's wooden patios or concrete patios outside. These, you know, these, if you look at the site plan, the slope does drop off, you know, fairly, you know, quickly behind these units. So it's really a space that if somebody wants to put a chair or lawn chair, they could, they could put one.
They're actually down in the application rendering stuff.
The patio spaces, no, that's what I'm saying.
Like the renderings that we have, like, don't show those.
Oh, interesting, okay, so this may have been just updated-
Or the YAP may have.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, I mean, then is that, that will just, you know, bleed off into the, into the natural landscape there. And then again, just back of the, back of the, back of the units here, and I'll just share this, hold on. Here. This is just a nice walkthrough video of the site, which I think just sort of gives a nice overview of, of the general character that we're hoping to accomplish. Again, this is looking south into that southerly parking lot. Weapons are to the right, and now behind these, these units. You can see the upper decks of the carports. And then just moving to the north around that larger loop. Primarily, these smaller units oriented, you know, the long way and on the narrow access to provide some diversity. And then around to the end of that upper parking lot where that bike shelter is. And then just from the back, again, just getting, getting views in and through. You know, one of the, one of the big goals of this was to provide, you know, a lot of open views through the site. And so both between the buildings and then just with a lot of glass on that lower level, that as you come into the site, there are a number of units that actually, you know, offer views, you know, completely through and to those wetland areas in the back. So trying to make this site as sort of transparent as possible and not present a, you know, wall of structure along that edge. So with that, I will open it up to- Um, with that, I will open up to-
Yes.
Um, so we'll, hold on just for a little bit. We'll open up public comment in a few minutes. Okay? If any questions to the board. Thanks.
Um, J- uh, can I, Jeff, did you say, are you, you're scheduled for the twenty-seventh for the Conservation Commission?
I saw some, yeah, some chatter on the public portal. I didn't get a confirmation of the date, but if that-
Yeah.
That sounds like it would be about right.
So you, I think so.
Yeah.
Good. That was one of my questions about input from the Conservation Commission at this point, so there hasn't been any.
Yeah.
We haven't had. Other questions from board members?
Just wanna make a general statement for the, for the public's awareness. Um, we're the planning board, so we're not the Conservation Commission. Um, we're not really concerned with, uh, the different buffer zones or anything in relation to conservation areas, right? So we're looking more about the, the site layout and setbacks and open space and those sorts of things, but not the wetlands themselves. We'll let our colleagues in the Conservation Commission deal with that on the twenty-seventh or whenever that hearing is scheduled.
Thank you. Other questions before we open up the public comment?
I'm, can you say a little bit more about the, um, pedestrian path with the gravel and the boardwalk areas, et cetera? I'm guessing the Conservation Commission's gonna be looking at that as well, since it's going straight through, you know, some of that, those protected areas, but I didn't totally catch where it is on the site and particularly how it's connected with the people who are living on this parcel, parcels.
So we did go through a number of conversations, um, both with Planning Department and Conservation to try and make sure that, um, whatever we were proposing would be, um, approvable by both boards, both commissions. Um, both in terms of just ensuring that we, um, enhanced or, or protected that existing connection, uh, pedestrian connection, but also with respect to, you know, what we could and can't do, um, in the wetland. There is, um, there are, there is a limited project status for, um, pedestrian paths, um, in resource areas, provided that there are certain width and, um, certain materials. And so that's what we worked with, um, the Conservation Department on, just to make sure that what we were proposing would be, um, approvable under their regulations. So most of this, um, you know, a lot of this is sort of an old former roadbed and, and many sorts. So it's, it's, um, you know, vegetation is closing in, but there is a, a, a pretty clearly defined, you know, pedestrian path. Um, we're really, you know, we will do some vegetation pruning where, where necessary to make sure that that's, you know, that, that pathway is, is open and clear and, and, you know, safe for pedestrian travel. Where it crosses over, um, it does meander, you know, back and forth across some of these rear property lines. So where possible, we've taken it, um, you know, within this property itself and relocated it and reconnected it back up to its existing, um, um, alignment, um, to make sure that, you know, it's, it's all on this property and will be maintained by, you know, this, um, this entity. Um, and then, um, yeah, where, where it does extend through, um, some wetter portions of that DPW during the wet season, we've proposed some elevated boardwalk, um, but again, just doesn't comply with that limited project status, uh, under the wetland regulations. So all of that will be, um, yeah, we, we're, so the two things that is we're, we're improving it and enhancing it, um, as much as possible to be able to ensure that that connection will remain. And then we are relocating if where possible to, to have all of that trail system be within this property so they have control and, and, um, responsibility over that.
Uh, and so is there, uh, when we were out on a site visit, it looked like there is this sort of informal path going from sort of the front of the shed over to that portion of the lot where the pathway is?
Right.
Are you formalizing that connection as well? So people on this who are living in these homes would be able to access it right from that corner?
Yes. So, so, if you probably can't see too well here, but yes, off this, off this bike shelter in the corner, this is where the trail is now, just, just off the edge of the northern edge of the page. Um, so there is a path connection that's shown in the plans that, you know, connects up here to that, directing into that, that trail.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That plan set was updated yesterday and the day before, so previously it was just described but not shown in the plan.
Okay.
Good. Um, so just in terms of process, I wanna be kind of clear. Um, we're still awaiting, uh, stormwater report and some comments from the DPW.
Right. So the plans were submitted today to DPW, so there's, they didn't have time to review them. Um, so that's for quote stormwater and the other comments that were included without utilities and so forth. So, um, because of the stormwater ordinance, the planning board can't close the public hearing tonight. Um, uh, and can't close the public hearing until the stormwater permit has been issued. So, um, I would recommend that, you know, you identify any other issues that might need to be addressed for the, for the inevitable continuation in order to hear the, you know, to make sure that stormwater permit gets issued. And then all of those then can be, you know, addressed, um, when the stormwater permit has been issued.
So in terms of public comment, we can also take public comment, um, 'cause there's quite a crowd here and also on Zoom. And we will list out the comments that are made, um, some of them we may address tonight, the others we may address, others we won't. Um, but it'll be very important that we don't go through those same comments two weeks from now when we continue the hearing. So folks are, are mindful of that. I'll have a good crowd.
And I would just say it's not necessarily gonna be two weeks, um, because in two weeks your agenda's pretty full.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Alvin, Carolyn, help me a little bit. I've been around for a long time, but I'm forgetful. Uh, why is this not a subdivision?
Um, so a subdivision is the creation of a street that creates frontage. So, um, and all the street infrastructure that goes with it. So this is already, this is a private way essentially. It's not a public street. So the frontage, frontage for this parcel is actually that piece that connects to North Street. So View Avenue is just avenue in name. It's not a street. Um, and all the units are on a single parcel, so it's not subdivided into lots along a street.
Thank you. And there was, I thought there was some, uh, legal, legal background with this street, or with this access previously? What has changed?
Um, so the legal access was actually related to, um, a paper street that was never built on the north side, but right where Jeff is, um, aligning. So previously, when the project came before the planning board and was approved, it had many more units pushed closer into the wetland, but also took advantage of a paper street, which, um, where, um, Jeff is, um, putting his cursor. And that's what was, um, determined to be not, um, allowed usage for this property owner to access the property. So that's the difference, is just a single access.
Thank you for the clarification.
And now the applicant home of View Street, it's a private road, and it's like a long driveway into this one lot.
Right. And that's the way it always was.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And that hasn't changed.
There's shared access?
There's other houses on.
For other houses?
Right. So, you know, it'd be, I don't know what the deed references say, but, um, my assumption is that there is, um, something in the deed that allows this easement essentially for those other units to cross this property in order to get to their property.
Okay. And with the conversations you've been having about this trail system, is there an associated easement with that for the public use? Or are we just relying on the applicant's goodwill to allow, to allow people to keep using that?
Um, yeah, so the, the, you all can't require the applicant to provide public access unless they were offering it for, um, you know, traffic mitigation purposes or something like that. Um, so it would be, so the idea though is they need to provide a connection from this project to Northern, Northern Avenue, but that's really for the use of the, um, future property owners or users of the property. Um, and it's up to the applicant to determine whether that's available for the general public to use.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks. Other general or specific questions from the board before we open it up? Good.
Hey, well, I guess if we're asking questions, my only one is on the photometric plan.
Mm-hmm.
So I was wondering if we could just zoom in on some of the areas by the property line. I didn't, I'll admit, I didn't take a great look at this. Um, right, so, I mean, there is a little bit of spillover of the property line.
Yeah, you do, I mean, keep in mind, we do have a fence along this edge.
Oh, okay.
Um, but that's, yeah, that's, I think that's the closest.
And then there's one another right north, right?
These are all, yeah.
It's pretty close. Yeah, right there. So a little spillover.
There's a point two, like, just rest of the property line there.
Yeah. Um, and then my only other comment, 'cause everybody knows how much I love our new lighting ordinance. Um, I noticed that these light fixtures are, uh, three thousand Kelvin temperature. And I'm pretty sure that we require twenty-seven hundred Kelvin.
The, we can certainly, yeah, expect that as, I know, I, I will say, it has been, uh, it has been a challenge.
I believe you. David and I believe you.
It has been an extreme challenge trying to find somebody-
I told you so. But no one listens.
We, we are bending the industry.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's not so much, it's not so much bending the interest, the industry as it is finding, um, either A, products and, um, and lighting that even fits those categories, but then get, um, even getting the photometrics on and nobody, you know, for liability reasons will do that. So it's, it's then it.
Thank you for reading through that.
Same happens when you base your lighting ordinance on the extraordinary recognition.
Duly noted. Duly noted. I'm sure the applicant can come back to the planning office, the building inspector, and ask for a waiver if it's in the meeting that completes another development and when the development's, uh, you know, approved. Um, until those are much more readily available to the construction industry. All right. Thank you, our lighting expert. Um, we can't change an ordinance tonight. Um, so why don't we open up the public comment? And again, there's a good crowd here, many people with expensive time, um, figuring out how they're gonna address the board, so I would, uh, suggest that you limit your comments to two minutes. Um, and I will gently nudge you if you're going over that. And if you are coming up after someone else, please try not to repeat their, um, comments or their topics. We're pretty smart here on the board and we can gather most of the inferences around traffic and wetlands and things of that nature. So we didn't, we don't have a sign-up seat, um, so we'll-
Do you want me to leave this up? Just, yeah, or?
Sure, and you might need to be nearby.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And again, the comments from the public are addressed to the planning board members, and we don't respond to each comic as it is. We take the comments, we can then cluster them into patterns, and then the board addresses them after the comment period as best as you can, along with the applicant. All right. Uh, we don't have a sign-up list. Who's brave enough to go first here in council chambers? And if you just give us your name and the address, um, when you start, that would be great.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is David Fenton. I live at one sixty-four, one sixty-six North Street, which is this, if I can get the cursor to move, I'm sort of technology savvy. This would be my house right here. So it abuts the View Avenue and this back portion. Uh, our concern here is that when, and I gotta say, Mr. Sirula has been very good, uh, communicating with us. He sat down with us on several occasions in my yard, and, uh, it's been wonderful to have that, that dialogue going about how this was all developing. Things have changed as a, as a result of our input, and we truly appreciate that. Initially, he had a common area for, uh, the residence there, which was gonna be down here. But apparently it fell within the two hundred, uh, foot area of the river, which I don't know if you've all been out there. It's just a little culvert that kind of oozes, uh, more times than not. It's more, it's heavier down the other end. So they had to be moved. That has now been moved up to right in this area. Um, and you and I are closer than where this is gonna be from my backyard. That's my concern. Um, I mean, I, you can dumb it down a little bit, say, you know, there's, there's twelve houses, there's gonna be twelve cars. Well, everyone has two cars. So there's gonna be a lot more traffic. And to have a common area, I guess it's a policy or, or zoning thing that this has to be in place. And I, I question that because in some instances that may be applicable, that may be needed. But in this location in Ward Three, downtown North Hampton, basically, you are with that ramp, you're thirty seconds from the, from the bike path. Uh, but by bike, you're right now either a minute or a minute and a half by bike to Bates Street or the Woodmont Road connection. Um, and as far as open space, you have Lambert Park, which is about a five-minute walk, and you have the very spacious Sheldon Field, which is five minutes from there. So my question is, why does it need to be there? Again, the property's gonna be from here to you away. Um, do we need twelve houses congregating there, having a party there, um, having a fire pit there? That close to our backyard, it's right there. Um, if it came out, you would know that. Uh, you would, you could see that personally. It, it is very, very close. Um, so I would like to see if that could be moved somewhere or maybe, uh, uh, permission to not have something like that in this particular case. Um, and this is the first time we've heard about the sidewalk. We knew there was gonna be a berm or a, or a curb along View Avenue. Uh, this is the first we've heard of a sidewalk. We're just, uh, but we'll talk to Mr. Sirula about that. But we, we do appreciate your time and, um, and I guess the other thing was the culvers, the drainage ditches. I, I kind of forget where those are gonna be. I, I kind of thought they were up maybe one here and another one down here somewhere, but again, that's something we can address with him.
Great.
Thank you very much for your time. I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Staying here in council chambers for public comment. Please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Jane Myers. I live in Florence, and I've been learning about this proposed project through the files in the city and from residents who are friends of mine on North Street. It's clear to me that the significant trees, I know that you said that you don't do wetlands, but it directly affects the site plan that you heard about in great detail. So I wanted to talk a bit about it and what the cons come to make the decision to. It's clear to me that the significant trees and wetlands mean a lot to the people who live in this neighborhood. They appreciate the flood control, heat mitigation that the woods and wetlands provide. The neighborhood also understands how excessively high the water table is at Eight View Avenue. Upon reading the plans and documents, it's amazing to me that the city would allow twenty-nine out of thirty-five Norway spruce trees to be cut down. That's the number twenty-nine. That's eighty-two percent of the trees. And, uh, differently from what was said by the presenter before, the USDA says the lifespan is more likely two hundred years plus, some in optimal circumstances up to three hundred years. The city would also be allowing within, um, thirty-five feet of the bordering vegetated wetlands near Million Brook. These woods and wetlands purify the city's air and groundwater. They provide shade that's fifteen degrees cooler than the temperatures downtown North Hampton. And each of the thirty-five significant trees, which range in diameter from twenty to forty-seven inches, absorb up to one hundred fifty gallons of water per tree per day. So without those trees, that water is gonna be even a greater issue. The developers are proposing to add eighty-three percent more impervious space, uh, area, surface area to the site. Without the trees and wetlands to mitigate heavy rainstorms and severe stormwater runoff, the homes to be constructed with slab-on-grade foundations will be vulnerable to flood risk. Tropical Storm Floyd covered the highest points of the parcel in nineteen ninety-nine, upland of where the homes are to be built. Because the homes are built so low to the ground, they are more susceptible to flooding than homes with regular foundations and full basements. I believe these woods and wetlands should be purchased and permanently protected by the city of North Hampton. The residents of this neighborhood deserve protection from climate change, just like any other neighborhood in the city. And I just have two questions you can consider. Could you please confirm what the current open space is on the plans? And would you- And would you clarify how far above grade the first floors of the homes are? Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Uh, anyone else?
Todd Severo. Sovere builders, I'm the applicant. So, just wanted to say that we looked at a number of different options for this property, and most of which had higher density and likely, you know, or definitely greater profitability. So I think it's oftentimes misconstrued that a developer is driven solely by profit. These are standalone units that are of modern design, and so minimalist or modern is much more expensive. So anytime you're building individual unit and not grouping units in a single building, it's more expensive. So we really carefully looked at and wanted to do something different and something forward-thinking, something interesting for, for, for the city. And in the process, trying to preserve the land and, and be mindful of, of the, you know, natural characteristics of the area. Obviously, it's, it's desirable in that it hopes to minimize vehicle traffic and to, you know, promote people going to work or shopping, walking or bicycle, using a bicycle. Bike trail is right there. So it's, it's important, I think, to note that it's really not driven by profit. This, this is, this is, these are, um, highly energy-efficient, very different design, modern design. And it's, and so there's many, many ways to have done this, uh, for more profit. So I really was interested in doing something interesting and different, and hopefully it'll have some, it'll be in demand. But that's yet to be seen because they're so small. Um, you know, how many people wanna own and live in an eight-hundred-square-foot house? I guess that's yet to be seen. The infrastructure cost is very high here to, to work on the site. So the driver is really to do something that works well for the city, that, that, that creates housing, but also is attractive and appealing and works with the, the habitat, the nature. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sovereign's Project.
Uh, name and address, please.
Uh, Page Bridgens, twelve Northern Avenue, almost, and a butter. Um, Sovereign's Project represents precisely what urban areas need to not be doing. We need to protect woods in this age of climate. Twenty-twenty-three, this past year, has been determined to be the hottest year ever. We can expect this to continue. That woods cools our neighborhood. It is I who brought my thermometer downtown, measured one hundred degrees under the Silverscape Designs, um, thing, and then took it to the woods. It was eighty-five degrees. This is so incredibly valuable to the city of North Hampton. I charge you, planning board members, Carolyn, all of you, to save this woods and to prevent all of this impervious surface, the cutting of trees, and then the paving. It's extraordinary, and we need to keep that cooling, the, we need that buffer between King Street and North Street. We need you to be responsible, members of the community, and say no to this project.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? If not, we'll move over to the folks on Zoom.
I think there's a question about whether there's an opportunity once the conservation committee is coming forward. Will there be another opportunity to speak then, or no?
Yeah, again, to process, if the meeting is, the meeting will be continued tonight, and there will be, we will not close the public comment period, I don't think. So there will be another opportunity for the public to come forward and speak. We'll just try to kinda hone in on those comments.
I do have a question, so.
Yep, please come up and ask your question. It doesn't have to be a comment.
Yeah, let's ask a question.
Yep.
My name's Ross Luntory, and I live on Northern Avenue. And I was just curious if this project can, I don't know if it includes the parcel on Northern or if it's just View as its own. I know that there's another lot that's on Northern. Just wanted to know how they relate to each other.
If, if I understand the applicant's presentation, there's one lot that's gonna be peeled off and, um, listed as an A and R lot? Um, and that's probably the one that you're, um, detailed, is that correct?
Yes, in fact, that's the A and R on the agenda for, um, later, is that parcel on Northern.
Just explain what A and R means.
Thank you. So, um, anyone who owns property along an existing street that, um, has frontage that meets the minimum frontage requirement in the zoning district, um, and the lot size could come before the planning board to essentially carve out a separate building lot, and it comes to the planning board, and the planning board looks at it and determines that there's no additional frontage that's required to be built in order to create that parcel. So that's why it's called, uh, it's subdivision approval not required in order to create a separate building lot along frontage. So, um, that is the process, um, by which the applicant is, um, going to create that separate building lot at the end of Northern. It doesn't connect. The back of it, it's not connected to this proj- project, but it is in a butts the project. And the path, the pedestrian path goes around that parcel.
Thank you. Any other comments? Just one question, please, uh, come on, last one from you.
Mischievous. Um, people are, are sending in questions to you via, via computer?
Correct.
Is that accessible to us since it's a public hearing? What will, how do we get access?
We'll read them out loud.
Oh, okay.
Come here. Okay.
It's in a word.
Great.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, no. So at this point, we'll move over to, uh, the participants on Zoom. Um, Carolyn, actually, I don't see any at this point, but it may be something about mine.
There, there are, am I, there are a few.
Yep.
Um, so. Robert, um, okay, Eileen Messer, um, how do these designs conform to the existing architecture? Mary, I live at one eighty-four, one eighty-six North Street, and there are certain times of the year with heavy rainfall, my cellar floods. Since these homes will be built on slabs, I imagine they will flood. Even if they don't, they will likely develop health-destroying mold, and the builders will have walked away.
Uh, just hold on, Carolyn. The first one was about how do these new proposed buildings, um, align with the existing architecture of the neighborhood? Is that the way you wanted to do that?
I think that was the intention, but it just said, how do these designs conform to existing architecture?
Okay. Okay, and the second one, the second one's about high water table.
Mm-hmm. And, um, those are the ones that have yet to be addressed.
So there are only two comments offered from the public? Okay. And there's one hand raised from, uh, uh, Jacqueline Jaiphone. Um, I believe this is the, um, resident who are going to offer time to speak verbally because of an accommodation. Um, so do we need to un-mute Jacqueline?
Did we have a letter from this person?
Yeah, yes, no, I believe there is a letter from this person also in the public file. There's a number of letters from the butters in the public file that the board, um, has looked at prior to the meeting. So that's a very good question. We can't not have her speak because she offered a letter.
No, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make it clear that, um, we have read the letters that you've submitted.
Yep.
So those are also acknowledged.
Great, great.
Um, and then, so the request was for, um, a reasonable accommodation. Um, and so the response was, um, you know, even though the reasonable accommodation is met through chat, um, um, George, um, had, um, asked me to send a message back to Jackie that, that this would be accommodated for one minute of, um, oral comment on it. Even though it's further beyond what a reasonable accommodation would be. So, um, I will need to.
Uh, hi, do you hear me?
Yes, we hear you fine.
Okay, great. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jacqueline McCrainer. I live at one twenty-four North Street. Um, as I'm hearing, not all of the residents in the North Street neighborhood support the proposed project at Eight View Avenue. I am a three-hundred-foot of butter, and I do not support it. Our water tables are excessively high due to the presence of underground streams and springs, the Milliard Brook that flows here from the Connecticut River, and because we're at the foot of the steep side of the Round Hill Road, Lacial Drumland, which has its own underground springs and streams. I do not believe permitting the proposed project is a responsible action by the city. Building in the wetlands would strip our neighborhood of critical flood control, as well as heat mitigation from the significant trees. Cutting down the significant trees would strip the city of its heat mitigation of the downtown North Hampton Heat Island. Slab-on-grade foundations built in wetlands are prone to flooding, mold, mildew, cracking due to soil settlement, heat loss, and costly maintenance and repairs. It may cost less to build up front, but maintenance issues can be an expensive nightmare down the road for homeowners. Destroying the woods and wetlands behind Eight View Avenue to build twelve homes, which folks aren't even sure here, it sounds like, if people are gonna wanna live in such small homes. So to gamble with that with slab-on-grade foundations is not the answer to the housing crisis. This project, in my view, is morally reprehensible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Good, good points, and we heard you loud and clear. It came through very well. And we appreciate the letter that you sent to us prior to this. Um, are there any other comments from?
I don't see any more, Jackie.
Okay, so we'll turn it back to the board for questions at this point. We'll keep the public comment period open, but we'll turn it over to the board. And again, we're trying to raise, raise issues for the applicant so that, um, they can go away and address those if, if there's some serious ones that we're unclear about.
I would, uh, uh, well, it doesn't need to be resolved now because we're gonna be coming back. Um, uh, it would be great to, to look at this, the plan and figure out, um, where else you might be able to put the, um, uh, the social hall, or the social space.
It's not hall, it's not all.
The social rock pit.
Okay. Gathering, please.
Yeah, got it.
Great, thank you. Um, even, I, I think in the past, um, I, I, I respect Chris's comment about that we're not the, uh, uh, Conservation Commission, but in the past, when we looked at projects like this of many houses backed up to a conservation area, wetlands area, the planning board has talked about some way of trying to live in, and this may have to, at the Conservation Commission, but limit the, uh, the human tendency to kind of improve your backyard space, create lawns, um, play areas for your children, badminton, that's whatever. So I just wanna go on record hoping that the Conservation Commission looks at that also. Some way of creating, uh, some kind of bounds so that five years from now, new homeowners aren't increasing their lawn into that area if this is approved.
Uh, yeah, I'll just say they're, they regularly, um, uh, create conditions that sort of create those hard barriers, um, for that.
Like a hard red line?
No, physically, in the ground.
Which is okay. Oh, okay, got it. Great.
Stone mounds, all of them.
Okay.
Is, is there a fence at, there's, at that front, I guess, you call the front, it's called the side set back in the plan? But at that area of the common space, is there, there's no line fence there?
Uh, no, I think it's just vegetation right now.
Okay. So it's existing vegetation?
No, there's no vegetation.
Is what's in the ground, that's what's there?
That's what's proposed as part of the plan, right, is, is new planting.
In the back of all of the parking areas.
Jeff wants to step up to the mic.
Yeah. So we're friends in our hybrid setting.
Yeah, sorry, you're. So you're referring to this area here? Is that what you're speaking to? Yeah, so, um, there, I mean, there's some additional, there's some plantings there now. We're proposing some additional plantings on, on this part of, on, on this site. They'll offer that.
In terms of fencing, the only fence is, uh, uh, behind that one parking area in the southern end.
Right.
The other parking areas, the headlights, you assume will be blocked by?
Yeah, I mean, this, this northern, the area is quite a distance, and there's quite a bit of vegetation. This one, uh, similarly is, um, you know, there's, there's a, a pretty dense cluster of trees here, not a, not all of which are coming down. Um, so that's, yeah, there's, there isn't much, you know, headlight intrusion in, in other portions of the, of the site.
So you might wanna work with the property owner to see if, like, a high fence there would make be a solution?
Along this edge?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, I mean, we could tell you to put it down in that nook that's in the two-hundred riverfront zone, but the Conservation Commission might not like that, so.
Right. No, we intentionally took it out of there just to avoid riverfront area impact, so, you know, we really were trying to avoid any, any jurisdictional, um, resource area impacts to the project.
So where's the A and R that we're gonna be looking at? Can you go back to that?
This, this one here.
That one there.
Yeah.
So after a number of meetings with the, the butters and talking about the fire pit area, we feel like there is a better location that, that is, uh, that we might move one of the bike storage areas. But it was pretty unanimous that the, the director butters wanted to see it moved from the location that David is concerned about. And so, um, we're open to that, to finding an alternative to that, and I feel like it's, it's a good idea and it's very possible. I own a property on Northern, and I, and we talked about, and it's larger than necessary for zoning. We talked about carving out, re- reconfiguring that lot so that it might move there as well. But I think there are some alternatives that would, uh, be more agreeable to the butters and, and good alternatives.
Common area being within the setback, there's nothing built in there, it's just a gravel, but, yeah. Maybe shifting it, so it's, the, the butters' garage is between the common space and the house?
It, it is.
Like, that's the garage they were saying, right?
It, it is. Um, but as David said, if you, if you, if you view this site, it, it seems pretty close. Al- although there is a buffer of his garage and, and his house, and with some plantings, I think it might be less, uh, disturbing than it is on the plan. But I think we should look at and, you know, consider some other options as well. And we, you know, we spent quite, quite a bit of time meeting with the neighbors and, and really wanna work with them and, and make sure everybody, um, has input in that we listen and try to, try to work with it as much as possible.
We're big, we're big fans of covered bike areas, though, so don't lose that.
I'm not saying eliminate. I, I think David would be okay with a covered bike area as long as it's not an area to congregate.
Very good.
So that might be something we see on everybody's plan at the next year, at the next meeting?
Potentially.
Okay.
Other? No?
No.
Maybe at this point.
Well, what we, there's a question about the sidewalk, right? Sidewalk material?
Yeah, so that requirement, uh, it needs to be cement concrete, not混凝土, yes, right.
And so how, how far into the site does that need to be? I mean, this whole thing, this isn't a street. I mean, this is part of the, the parcel, so I just, I don't quite understand. I mean, we don't require people that have concrete walks in their, to their house, right?
I would suggest they'd go to that crosswalk. I mean, work, it's, I mean, basically, the zoning says, essentially, the pieces of the project that act and function like a street, you need to build the infrastructure and sidewalk connectivity in compliance with our street standard. So that View Avenue, even though it's a street, it's acting like that for this project. So, you know, pulling it into where the T is for the rest, I think that would be appropriate. It makes sense to go up and around to the crosswalk. That might make sense, and then the rest of it could be betonized.
So that, that will essentially narrow View Avenue?
It will a little bit.
Is, is, is View Avenue paved to the edges of the?
To the edges of the city's easement, to the property line?
To the right of it. It's not right of it, but the property line.
Yes, it was paved by the city.
I mean, site plan shows that it looks like there's a couple feet, not 25 feet.
Right.
It looks over the stage, it does. Yeah, it's grass, how much goes up?
Good, the concerns about high water table and the culvert and stormwater retention will be addressed more or less and be evaluated by the city engineers.
Right, they have evaluated that, you'll see comments about it, but the infiltration system, for example, the standard is it has to be two feet above high groundwater. I mean, the reason why they're building on slab is because the groundwater side varies from about a foot and a half to three feet, something above seasonal, seasonal high groundwater. So the point is that, you know, they're not putting the foundations in seasonal high groundwater.
Looking at that grading plan, it seems like you're building it up quite a bit above existing grade.
It's in the back portion of the site, yes. In the, in the western portion, yes.
Yeah.
So there, it's essentially taking the.
Six feet or something.
The force.
Yeah, it varies, yeah.
Carolyn, you heard, you know, certainly quite a few comments about the loss of trees in relationship to the establishment of new housing. You provided us with a, you or the applicant provided us with some charts, some kind of evaluation of, I think, trees in terms of the carbon loss. Could you talk about that a little bit, Porch?
Sure. So we, over the last six months or so, with our office contracted with consultants to do, set, sort of create a tool for us to look at carbon impacts of different, various projects and outcomes and locations. So this calculator essentially looks, you can put the input in and sort of what the existing conditions are, where the project is located, and what the typical vehicle miles traveled are for each geographic area of the city, so that has a carbon impact. So basically, we're looking at transportation impacts, building impacts, trees, existing buildings versus proposed. And so we ran numbers of this project in this location versus this number of units in a similar project further out, in a different location. And the impacts were much higher, building in sort of new pristine area out, let's say, Ryan Road or Florence Road or something like that. So again, we know that there's a huge demand for housing and that, you know, we are, that's part of the issue related to this climate change that affects people who are at the lower end of our economic spectrum more than others. And so, you know, about, looking at that evaluation, both in the short term and also the long term, I think is important. The zoning ordinance does not say not to remove trees, but in fact, we go beyond most other cities in the Commonwealth and require replacement based on the calculation for those, for that tree removal. And of course, it's not all the trees on the site, it's in, and there are no trees, you know, between, at the 35 foot. So that was sort of the quick look at that. And so, you know, we think that certainly from the Sustainable North Hampton Plan, the, the building, the building, the standards for these new buildings are highly efficient in addressing units that are, you know, accessible, more accessible to people because of their size, simply because of their size and closer access to the bike path and the networks in the, in the streets.
And that was one other comment we heard was the open space calculation. I mean, I would have to think we're like over 90% or something.
Open space, yeah, it's, we're less than 10%, I think, or, you know, 12% with, with the previous area on the overall all property.
So like 88% of open space?
Open space, right.
Right.
Yep. Yep, and the other comment we heard was, does this style of housing fit in with the existing architecture? Well, it does not mirror the existing architectural, which is, you know, early 1900s, most of it, single family homes. But it's made something different, something innovative in this person's perspective. So whether or not it fits into the, the architecture of that neighborhood around North Street and the cemetery, I don't think that that really comes into our consideration at this point. It is kind of set apart also in many ways. I appreciate the, the developer trying to do something different, trying to do something smaller and perhaps taking a gamble, perhaps not. Let's see if this project is approved.
And just sort of on that note, you know, this neighborhood is, as you know, along with many other neighborhoods, has sort of an eclectic mix of architectural styles. And the zoning does not pick or dictate architectural styles. It's really more about scale, a bit more than architectural style. There were, there's one other comment that came in, if you're done, once you're done talking on, I just didn't want to forget on chat.
Great, go ahead.
Okay. David from 125 North Street, it just made a comment, several new developments in downtown North Hampton have homes that have been on the market for several years that have yet to sell. For example, Bridge Street, primary terrace, condos on Holly Street. Meanwhile, we have a lack of affordable housing and a climate crisis on our hands. What will be the plan if these homes do not sell?
Drop the face. Thank you, David. I think that does raise, I think in the application, the application speaks to 1.8% or, or some of the units being in affordable range. Is that true?
I think it was, I don't recall that specifically, but certainly with the smaller scale units, the, you know, the, the target market is for something, you know, lower than, you know, what an average, you know, 1,800, 2,000 square foot, single family home would go for. That this is, you know, offering something unique to the market that, you know, hopefully there's, there's a demand for. It seems like there's certainly some appeal in other towns, so.
For sure. I'll, I'll, I'll look again, though. I thought in the application, there was something, a percentage of the 12 units would be affordable, and it came out to 1.8%.
There's a, there's a requirement in the zoning that a percentage of the units either be affordable or be less than 1,200 square feet. So I think the number is nine of those units are under 1,200 square feet. And three of them are the three larger ones that were discussed. So I think that was, and that's, the zoning requires that, but it's either or. And so, given that these are, you know, around 900 square feet, by their very nature are going to be more accessible to people at a, overpriced.
Thanks. All right, should we make a motion to continue the hearing at this point? Or can I give the audience one last bite at the apple? Everybody okay till we come back again? Okay, we have one last comment here.
I appreciate the concern about housing. Let's talk about Airbnb. Most of many, many houses along North Street, throughout this neighborhood we have been talking about, are now Airbnb. People have come from outside, bought houses, built their own house out back, and then rented out the front house in Airbnb. Other people, many, many people throughout North Street area are doing Airbnb. If we want housing, let's have the conversation about Airbnb. And empty dwellings. There are houses that have been empty for years. We need to deal with this and we need to, these are places where people used to live. One of these houses that's been empty for the last few years, these people own it, and they come, every time they come to town, like once a year or something, they stay there, this wealthy couple. And I, I said to the next door neighbor, don't you wonder how many people lived there 50 years ago? She said, I happen to know, I lived here. There were 11 people, and she named them, you know, this extended family. So we went from 11 people living in this house down to zero.
Please, Bridges, Northern Avenue.
That's right.
Please come on up to the podium.
Well, I didn't want to speak, my name is Dennis Helms, 174, 176.
Come on up, Dennis.
I just have a question. Dennis Helms, 174, 176 North Street. I just want to make sure, since the hearing is still being continued, this, I want to think more about what I want to say and how I want to say it. So I just want to make sure that A, I can email you my comments, and B, when you next meet, not in two weeks evidently, I can still speak at that time. Is that's correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Everyone will be able to speak again.
Okay.
And it'll be posted in a, in a legal way. Today is not, now speak your piece, or forever hold your peace.
Speak now or forever hold your peace?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it will, will it be posted, I think, the, yeah. Right. It'll be on the agenda, but.
They don't resend postcards, but it'll be reposted.
You won't get a new notification. This hearing is your notification.
No, but there's a legal notice posted at City Hall, wherever Carolyn does that, about the agenda, right.
The agenda.
But no, there won't be postcards.
And we will set the date and time of the continuation.
Right now.
Yes.
Okay.
So you can write it down and send a postcard to yourself.
So this is going to be based on the juvenile.
Ooh.
You all answered.
During the summer, the planning board often goes down to one meeting a month rather than.
Yeah, tell me, what are the days going to be?
Rather than two meetings a month.
So the most people could attend was July 25th and August 22nd.
August 22nd.
And then, so those are the fourth Thursdays of the month. So the next meeting would be July 25th. Sam, can you make that one?
Because our next meeting, June 27th, is our full agenda.
Right.
So then our next one is going to be once, just once in July.
I move to continue the hearing at 8 View Avenue to sometime that Carolyn will tell us on July 25th.
I mean, you could do seven o'clock because we don't have anything yet set for our agenda.
Seven o'clock on July 25th.
I said. Great, any discussions? All right, all day we're moving it to July 25th, 7 o'clock. All right, unanimous. Thank you, folks, for coming.